Call this meeting to order. Oaken Hall.
Erica Pardon.
Sean Harley.
Randy Snead.
Angel Lucino.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Williams.
George Knoll is not here tonight. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of 12:01, 2020, regular session. Do you want to have a chance to look at them?
Make a motion for the minutes from what's right here.
12:01, 2021.
We have a motion and a second. Any other? Please be seated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Citizens input. Tragedy of downtown, that's better.
You can scratch that out. I think I got that taken care of, so.
Anybody else? Okay, full business attorney report.
I'd like to say I'd be quick, but I'd be a liar. I have these nepotism certificates. There's a bunch of the end-of-the-year kind of stuff, guys, tonight, okay? And there's... One of those for each of you to sign. This goes back to the executive. George also needs to sign one of those and get it back to himself, obviously. This is just one of these annual things that we have to do.
No complaints. Do you hear that, everyone? No complaints. Hold on, let me sign yours, too.
Are you using the whole page these times?
I am. The only way is all the way is Erica.
They need to be exactly turned in to George, but I would, for now, since George is not here, I'd give them to Lisa or deliver those to George. He needs to sign one himself.
Right, I have it.
The next thing we have are these conflict of interest disclosure statements. There's a few members here on the council, as well as Lisa, that it looks like I've got signed copies back. If you're an elected official, that's great. If you're appointed, like a Mark Vander Wheel or John Vander Wheel, those have to be approved by the council and then signed, and I have to get those down to the state board of accounts before the end of the year. So this is something that we've got to tackle on the rest of the night. But I've got one from Mark Vander Wheel and John Vander Wheel. They're both, obviously, owners of the Brandewell Development Corporation, DVA Artists to Invest Hardware. Mark is on redevelopment, also the economic director. John is a member of the park boards. So we have those conflict of interest because there's obviously purchases that do occur with Artists to Invest Hardware. So that is up for your consideration to execute those conflict of interests.
Are those ready to vote on now, Derek?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to pass conflict of interest statements for Mark Vander Wheel and John Vander Wheel.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
These need to sign on the second page by council members.
Everybody?
Everybody.
Give him the first one for him.
So we won't get to sign them? I'm looking right now. That's what I'm telling you. Are you sure?
Just so you all understand, the rest of them that I have for Sean, I have one for George, and I have one for Lisa, those do not need to be executed by the council. They just need to get turned in. They've already been executed by those particular individuals, but I just have to send them down to state. And again, just an annual requirement that we need to do to make sure that we're on the up and up. Another issue, if we're ready or if we want to wait, that's going to... Guys are farmhands. We've done this in, I don't know, the last seven, eight years would be my guess. We have about 20 acres that's available for lease. There could be a potential issue this year about how in the world a farmer gets back to where he needs to be. This is one of those things that, like, we normally get on this in November. So it's my fault. I've not brought this to the council's attention until now. I just realized this. One of the, again, the end-of-the-year things. I'm trying to figure out, like, hey, what do we need to get knocked out? But there were 20 acres that were leased last year. The current lease expires December 31. If we want to lease this existing farm ground, we can still do that. We're down to 20 acres. Access, or I guess I'll call it ingress and egress, could be a potential issue. But it's something that we could get set up and put in place by March 1 and have it in by the end of the year, which should allow sufficient time for anybody to do what they need to do to basically plant a crop, get it off. So I'm bringing that to your attention. If we want to continue this, fine. We can get on it. If not, so be it. Then it'd be fall of ground.
My opinion is, do we figure how the DC can get in and out of that property? I don't know that I really... I don't know that I'm in favor of putting it out for bid just yet until we get that figured out.
Can I get... I need to meet with you. If I can, let me talk with him. If we can't figure that out, the only thing I'm... we're going to need to look, and it's going to be if it's allowed. I may have to be an abiding landowner. I mean, I don't know how else you can do it...
In terms of...
Being able to lease it, because we have no... I've got an easement there, but not for that. I've got a utility easement.
We can, yeah, right, and...
Until we can figure out the drive we talked about, we have no...
Given that the town currently owns all of the ground, nothing's been sold, I mean...
There's still...
One lot in particular could be kind of set aside unless somebody decides they want that, and I understand that.
No, I know what you're thinking, but once we get that, those roads in, I don't think he's going to want them driving on them.
That's what I was thinking, too. Once we get utilities in the ground and stuff, and I...
So we need to...
Farm equipment can do some...
I guess I just want to, I want to ask you what I wanted to see what you think.
And that's fair. And again, it's one of those things, guys, that I'm sorry that I didn't rub this up in November.
Jamie and I talked about it a month ago, and I forgot. I was going to get with him and try to... Because I knew the issue was there, and I didn't.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to leasing. I just think we need to figure out how to get somebody in and out of their... Their correct way.
Possibility, Mark, of getting in on the east end?
Uh, no, because we own any property on the east end.
I know we don't own it as of yet.
We have to talk with that landowner and try to get a...
And be a process as well, in terms of getting the lease together for this farm here.
Can the next meeting be too late?
No.
No, I think we're looking at probably a 60-day process. So if we started something in early January, we'd be looking at early March, maybe mid-March, to start a lease. And I think everybody appreciates, in terms of, if you're a farmer, that you're getting 20 acres, do what you can do. And I think the bid will be corresponding to that as well.
Crop, did he have in there? You're going to...
Yeah, corn. And I mean, there's a couple of things I want to ask him. I mean, your options. If you want somebody to try to put, hey, we're obviously going to try to go to a multi-year lease, and there's just some questions, and I want to get his...
Still got to get it out, issues with that.
Unless it's the adjoining landowner that...
Well, the only thing I might concern, the only reason I ask that, Mark, is since it was corn last year, the potential should probably, as rotation-wise, go to beans this year. With the price of fertilizer for corn, I think, right now, I mean, it's, after first year, it's going even higher, so that's why... Potential of going to beans is a better prospect than going to corn as far as the leasing, buying products, to put on, so.
Good leasing, in particular. But we will, of course, limit the bids.
Exactly. I understand that, Mark.
Where's we put the bids out?
Typically, November. We're about a month behind the process. And again, I take responsibility for this.
You don't have to apologize. That's fine. I just wasn't sure. So I agree with Sean. I think we should hold off on this till Mark has got some more clear information. So we want to table this, then, till the first meeting next month, Mark?
It'll be the first, it may be the second. I guess see when I'm free to meet with Derek. Sometime in there, but we'll get working on that now until we can come up with, hopefully, by then.
So the first meeting is the fifth. You don't think that's enough time?
Yeah, I don't think we meet till that next week, so... We may have a little answer on the fifth, but we'll shoot for the 19th for sure.
Okay, all right, so let's table this to the 19th, then.
Last thing I have, the Moore property. That is a situation that we have, again, the judgment, and I know that we've talked about having somebody come out and take a look at that. I each up.
Could you put pictures? I forgot my laptop.
But we've kind of sat on this for the last couple of meetings. And we don't have to necessarily make a decision this evening, but I know that a fair amount of work's been done. There were some issues. There was some hoop buildings or something, of that effect. And I'm not sure if that was exactly according to code or not. So, no, it's not. That's not a structure. He's just had some aluminum frame. He's got tarp's on it. I've talked with the March County Council Commissioner, as well as my own experience, and he said absolutely not. It's not a structure, so that needs to be removed.
So is removing that going to be part of the original, or we're going to have to rebid that out?
Got to rebid that if we want that removed.
I went back and researched. There's never been a building permit for it or been inspected or anything else, so it's illegal however you look at it.
So anything else on there? There was a little shed. Is it fine? It's toward the front and on the east side?
No, sorry, that is in the front yard setback. I had pictures, but they're on my...
That's all right. I don't worry, yeah.
No, it's in the front yard setback. So it has to be torn down or go back past the front of the house.
So on this bid, then, so we'd be bidding to remove the big structure and to move the shed, yeah?
Well, I don't think it's a movable shed.
Well...
I think it's probably going to need to be torn down. It doesn't have any runners on it or anything else, so you can't...
Right, can't move it. Built-in place, basically.
Yes.
With no permits or anything like that.
I guess I'm trying to come up with exactly how we want it. We just bid, and we're going to go to remove the two structures.
I think that's...
Is that fair?
That's what I think we're hearing. You correct?
Yes.
And again, I mean, this can all be made known to Mr. Moore. If he decides to take action on his own, which he never really has, great, but short of that, then...
So we should give him a length of time, send him...
No, I think we let it out for bids and understand that process is going to take some time.
Right.
But at the same time, let him know that, hey, there's going to be folks out here that are going to take down the shed and get rid of the hoop building. If you want to tackle that on your own, more power to you.
Do we need to send him a letter, then?
No.
No?
I'm just saying, just as a courtesy to let him avoid additional costs and expense, he's already into those 14,000 some odd bucks.
I'll make a motion to... Concerning the Moore property with the two out-of-compliance buildings, one being the hoop building, the other being the... So the per se storage shed is built-in place. It's not in compliance. To send those out for bid to be torn down or removed otherwise, and at the same time, send a notification or simply have Corey stop down and let him know that we are sending that out for bid, having them torn down. So if there's anything in those that he wants to save, it's his responsibility to get them out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to... On Moore property, to add the two structures removed that are not in compliance with anything. And also, we should have Chief Bowman stop by and letting know that there is... The buildings are going to go out for bid to be removed, and any personal property or anything inside he would like to have removed. He needs to get that done. And if he... Derek, if he chooses to remove them, do we have to give him a time? If he says, listen, guys, I'll tear these down?
No, it's basically a situation where we're going to let it out for bids, and it's going to take a... I won't say a meeting or two.
Right, we'll be in the state burial marks.
Yes, and so if he gets it done at halftime, then we won't need to worry about bid because the work's been done. But...
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
His response has been negative.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. So Lisa, we need to get that out for bid, yeah?
Yep, I'll take care of that.
Thank you, Derek.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's... Can't, though. Terms of the... Can't, but... We can address that.
If we're already in the March, I'm asking, because in April, it seems to be the first mowing.
You want to tackle it now? Okay, let's, guys, it's under new business, but I think cemetery rates?
No, no, cemetery mowing.
Which is...
I didn't include it on there. I'm asking you if you want to include it in here.
We'll include this in our report. But we do need to basically let out a bid or an invitation for bids for the mowing contract for the cemetery.
I need a motion to send out bids for mowing the cemetery.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to out bids for the mowing of the cemetery for the year of 2022. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think mowing's kind of, I think it should be stated, mowing and trimming of the stones.
Yeah, well, it'll be maintenance.
I think it should be in the bid process somehow, so it's...
Yeah, we have bids.
Long as that's covered.
We have mowing specs that are, that we send out with the bid.
Correct, and Sean, I can't believe you exactly what that looks like, but it does, I mean, it's not just mow, it's...
Yeah. There's two clean updates.
Just want to be sure we don't get ourselves in a...
And tell you what...
We might want to make that long strip through that year.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. By the next meeting, I'll have that bid ready to go, and I'll aim to get it to you so you can look at it. So if you say, I want to be more specific about weeding around each and every gravestone, or whatever it is, then we can address that. So I'm not just going to submit something without you guys taking a look at the bid spec. But I'll have that prepared, ready for you to take a look at next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
I need a motion to update attorney report. Could you ask me that, Derek?
We have a motion and a second to accept the attorney report. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-18, salary ordinance 2022. Now, this ordinance is voted on last meeting on the first reading, so we get the second and the third reading to vote on or to pass or something. So we need a motion to suspend the rules and a little bit of pass on the second, third reading.
That Lisa... Lisa, that still didn't come into our files here, but that's what you showed us here earlier, that writing for...
Yes. I have, yes. The comp time will be the same on both the salary ordinance and the... I don't know why it's not coming into the file, because it's in my Dropbox, so...
It's not going through, so...
So what happened was, just so that we cover both of them at the same time, when we were going over comp time, we decided to let the employees carry 80 hours throughout the year of comp time, which means if they work overtime and they want to take it as compensatory time, they can. So after talking with everybody, you guys got emails from me and stuff, and from George and from Sean, we kind of came to a consensus, not a vote, a consensus, that everybody wanted to see that the compensatory time after the 80 hours, if you carry that till the end of the year, it'll be paid out at the end of the year. It will not carry year to year. So I made those changes today. You're more than welcome to look at the hard copies that are in that file. I did show Sean earlier to make sure. I did send them to my Dropbox today. I have them in there. But for some reason, your Dropboxes are not updating.
Yeah, they're not.
Or something.
It's here, like, in the files, but it's not syncing.
But I just sent you another email. Did you try to...
Yeah, it's the same thing. It's still sitting in bed.
Okay, so I apologize, but I mean, I send them as I can, you know what I mean? So if, like I said, if you need a minute and you want to review the hard copy, you are more than welcome. That is the only change from what we did the other day.
Well, and I'm going to be...
But there are changes.
Yeah, I mean, what I see that was passed on December 1, and as an example talks about the Sergeant SRO officer at a rate of 2466 per hour. What I saw in our packet is 2430 per hour, and that's just one example of a change. And I see other changes that are kind of highlighted. So I want to make sure you guys know exactly what it is, what document that you're passing, and I want to make sure that you say...
No, I know.
This is correct, so we don't have to revisit this.
Oh, don't worry. We'll pass it 15 or 15 minutes later.
The 2430 is what it was.
You changed the SR, you took the SRO off of that one?
But I took the SRO off of it, but I did not think that I changed any of the dollar amounts at all, but apparently. Can I see the salary ordinance, please?
You take a look at that and make sure.
Because this is the one they're signing, so this is the only one that matters. So it does say 2430 an hour. This thing has been changed like 15 times in the past week. But I think none of the things were messed with.
Is that the only one Derek is on the police department ones?
I'm looking.
I'm not going to say that it is, Sean. I just saw, like, I just saw a difference, and again, and not to put you on the spot here, Lisa, but I just looked at this, like, 430?
Here's what they're supposed to be. Probably that sergeant one didn't get changed because we don't have a sergeant. I probably didn't put it in there.
We don't have a sergeant.
All right, so hang on.
David, Derek.
I thought Ryan was just...
Just G.
I'm sorry, but if we don't pass this, can I get them back there?
We're going to pass something, right, so we just want to make sure that we're doing the best we can.
Give me five minutes. Okay, so this page is correct to this one. The one that is not correct are these two.
Yeah, that's what happened, Lisa. I never changed that one. I'm looking at the email I sent back to you on the 9th, or the 29th. And I probably overlooked that simply because we don't have that position right now.
Okay, this one is different because we did change the compensatory time. So these two are exactly the same.
Probably won't, unless Corey makes some kind of recommendation to do that, but I don't see that happening. That's totally up to Corey to bring to the police commission, but I don't see that happening, Randy, right now, anyone.
You want me to use yours, too? Be very annoying. Time's up.
I've got experience with children.
I think she might be a little bit meaner.
I am not. I walk in every day and say, good morning, children. That's exactly what I call them, children. Sit down, children. Yeah, I do. You teach, where the hell do you teach? At middle school. At middle school, in the park. Seventh grade. Seventh grade, they let me teach in. Well, I'll tell you what, it was their mind.
You wanna see what it's supposed to be?
So this chart is exactly the same.
Apparently it's in yellow.
I would take it a few shots.
Close to a four percent. This one down here was like a funky color, whatever I said. I did a percent front and added some power to those. The one that got missed, I didn't do a percent, you had that position on that. That's the one that Derek is called out as being in conflict. So, yeah.
Let's make a deal.
That's how they're supposed to look. I mean, if we wanted to put, there's nobody in that position, so we can always address that later.
See?
Randy, do you wanna see this, what it's supposed to be?
This is what it's supposed to be.
Because we had to fix that.
The ones in yellow include pay raises. Here, it should say twenty-six.
It does.
That one there is the one that Derek's called out that did not get a change. I did not change it.
That's correct.
That is correct. Simply, I didn't put a pay raise on it for. Yeah, that's not, that's the position, it's twenty-sixty-six. No, those, and they're not numbered, just. Those are, the yellow includes raises. Twenty, he's got, there's some leeway in there, so, because he's got one, well, it's one up there, he's got some leeway to go for raises. He's got one right now, he'll big that, because he's like.
So.
Pass it down to Andrew, so she can see.
All right, so we're gonna go through these and we're gonna put the two of them together to make a good ordinance, if that's acceptable. If it's not, then we have, by all means, call another meeting.
I think we're all, I showed everybody here. Andy, you wanna see it? He can explain to her, let us explain to you. That's all right, it needs a new cover. Ones in yellow are changes. The one there, the one there at the bottom on the top page. There's the one that Derek called out as being different. The one on my page, what it's supposed to be. And that's the exact copy that I sent all council members when I figured those raises for the police department. So yes, Lisa, whatever we need to do to make it through.
All right. So you all have your salary ordinance in front of you?
I've got the original one that I sent everybody, and I sent you to put in the salary.
No, right, but you have the salary ordinance. You need to know what you're voting on, so.
Yes.
The salary ordinance, page one, is when it comes down to the sergeant's pay, one of them says twenty-four thirty and the other one says twenty-four sixty-six. And I think that twenty-four sixty-six is with the three percent.
Yes.
So I would say that this is a good.
Twenty-four sixty-six is what it's supposed to be.
That is the only difference on page one?
Yes.
Yep, everything else is good.
Derek, would you agree? That's the only difference.
Twenty-four seventy-seven, I think I saw.
Okay.
To be honest, I couldn't look at.
So I.
What was twenty-four sixty-six?
Sergeant's pay.
So I do have one question. We didn't ask you the day, I forgot to ask you. The SRO.
We moved it.
We moved it.
Back to our first class, okay, because I was gonna ask you and I forgot.
Actually, we took it off, I believe.
Yeah.
It'd just be a first-class patrolman, right?
It's more of a title than it is a position.
Then page two.
The SRO is probably actually.
The one that you have.
I don't have a page two.
I think they all, it's not that big, but he doesn't. Since he's an officer retired, it's just like first-class patrolman. Just kind of confused.
All right, so page two. On the first-class patrolman, that is the same, okay?
Twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Yes, the second-class patrolman, we did put a, we took out the SRO and we did put in there a salary range of twenty-four fifty-one to twenty-five dollars.
That's correct.
The third-class patrolman is twenty-three seventy-five to twenty-four and the patrolman probationary is twenty-one sixty. Those are the only changes on page two.
Give me good page two.
Good page two. And we removed the SRO out of the second-class patrolman, just so that you know.
That's more of just a technical idea of the title.
Page three is good. Good page three, nothing has changed. Everything on there is. You got page three there.
I do.
Yeah, page three, I don't see any changes on page three, do you?
I don't see anything.
Oh, no, these are all numbers. These are the numbers. Yeah. They're all the same. All right, so good page three. Page four. And there is nothing changed on page four. That's good page four. Page five, the compensatory and flex time. This did change. This is where we said that it was.
It's four and five. I think you're looking at four and five on what you sent via email.
Right. Okay, so compensatory time. Page. Okay, page four is right. There's nothing changed on that one, but on page five is where we added the eighty hours payable for compensatory time, but they will be paid out at the end of the year for all unused compensatory time hours. That is the page I showed you earlier, Sean. So that's a good page five. Page six is the hours. And then, that, nothing changed on the vacation schedule. And then the page seven is the holidays. That did not change. There are still nine holidays listed, just like you wanted, and the bereavement leave and jury duty and witness duty are all the same. Page eight is the medical premiums, and those were all set. So that is a good page eight. I have a good page nine. Nothing changed for short-term disability, public retirement system, Hoosier Start, all of that stayed the same. Page ten, the coding allowances, mobile devices. Full-timers get one sixty and then part-timers receive thirty. That's in there and the business expenses stayed the same. You have a good page ten.
It says one, but.
Here's ten. And then the other one is the town-issued credit card at the very end with all your signatures. The use of that is still supervisor-approved. So that did not change either. So there's a good page eleven. I apologize for that, but like I said, this thing has changed like fifteen times in the past week, so I thought I had the exact one.
So that's the document.
So this one, we can sign this one.
Yes, and I think I went over any and all changes. It would be the one that I sent out today that you guys, for some reason, are not getting in your Dropbox, so.
I just looked, it's still not sent.
I'm sorry, you can see it.
I can see it, it's not here.
You just can't open it, so.
Yeah, it's there.
And I even sent it tonight, again, so.
Yeah, same way.
So if you're not comfortable, then.
No, I think, I think you guys appreciate the extra time.
I mean, I have been sending you these day after day after day and highlighting the changes, so.
Well, I went over the ones that was the major ones that Derek called out with each council member here. And it's just, what I showed them is exactly what I sent them when I was asked to figure those for the police department from the rest of the council. Nothing changed, and I had the original here in my computer. They've all seen it tonight. So I don't see any problems with passing this myself.
Three.
We've passed ordinance.
Yeah, but we've made changes, so.
Well, we did it on just the first reading, correct?
Yes.
So we need just, we can do the second and third then, correct?
Even with the changes?
Even with the changes.
From the first ones?
Yes. Yes.
Let me see this. I'll make a motion to pass the Town of Argus salary ordinance for 2022. It's ordinance 2021-18 on the second and third readings.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass Town of Argus 2022 salary ordinance, ordinance 2021-18 on the second and third reading. Any other discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance passed. Okay, next. Next thing on our agenda is Resolution 2021-12 Grants Suspension.
I can pick this up. It's a resolution, we adopted a resolution back in May of 2019. Two different, but very similar downtown business incentive programs. And it was the summit of the council at the last meeting to suspend those. This resolution suspends them indefinitely, which means it won't be in place unless or until you decide to put them back in place. And that's what this resolution would accomplish.
I think that was a consensus we had at the last meeting, wasn't it, Randy?
Yes, we had no problem with that. Okay, we have a motion to pass Resolution 2021-12. We got a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2021-12 is passed. Other old business. Think you took care of that. Okay, on, moving on to new business. We have ordinance 2021-19 Handbook Revision for 101/2022.
So like I said, this has been in process. Sean and his, Sean, Erica, Lori, and.
Randy.
Yep.
And Randy and Mark all worked really hard on this. I have, I have New Focus HR write it for us. So I have been sending you every change that has been made. Again, we have a clean copy because I got it straight from Kathy today at New Focus HR. Sent it out, hopefully it got into your handbooks and your emails.
Well, that's one that hasn't synced.
And I showed Sean the only change that we made today from the past few days is that compensatory time being paid out at the end of the year. And that is in the handbook, if you look on Randy's copy.
Anyone wanna say it?
Page fifteen.
Yeah, I already, I see, I'm good. It is.
So.
It's in there, Randy.
That is the only thing that we have changed since like three days ago, when I sent out the original packets. And hopefully we don't do this again for a while. Just saying.
It started earlier in the year.
Yeah.
In our defense, I mean, it was kind of a major undertaking. We kind of done the whole thing and started over, basically, but some sections of it.
But you did get a handbook with all of our changes highlighted.
Yes.
And then.
Will you give us a clean copy, give us a hard copy for us?
Everybody will have to sign for one, so.
Okay.
So now, you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2021-19 Handbook Revision.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2021-19 Argus Employee Handbook Revision.
It's an ordinance, so it's.
Oh, it's an ordinance, so we have to.
First reading is.
You have to suspend the rules.
So I need to motion to suspend the rules and pass all three readings for the ordinance 2021-19 Handbook Revision.
Second.
Okay, so we had a motion to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings, ordinance 2021-19, the Argus Employee Handbook Revision. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance passed. Next ordinance is 2021-20 Trash Rates. And this will need to be done on the same rate.
So I called Republic Services and got the new rates for this year and incorporated them into the. and got the new rates for this year and incorporated them into the new trash rates for twenty.
Did they raise them?
For the next year. Yes, they raise every, all five years they raise.
Is that in the contract?
Yes.
Part of it too, Sean, could be the landfill's raised their rates.
I understand, I just.
I don't know, yeah.
There's county area wide, there's, we're not gonna get into that tonight, but I just wanted to see where we're at, so.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty and suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
And.
Pass on all three?
Pass on all three readings, yeah.
I'll second that one as well.
Okay, so we have a motion to pass, to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty, trash collection rates for twenty twenty-two. Any other further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one twenty has passed. Cemetery rates.
No. So this is just a discussion. You guys were talking about raising the cemetery plot rates this, next year. Right now they're at like, um, six forty, I believe. So that includes the foundation and the grave space. For the January meeting, just kind of keep it in your thoughts of what you want. Just that you have it, you're thinking about it.
Okay.
I didn't have time. I, I ran out of time, so I couldn't get the ordinance together, so. And I needed a number that you guys were thinking about in order to put it in, but.
Now, we went up last year.
No, we didn't go up last year. It was the year before.
So we went, it was like five something at one time.
Well, when I first started here, it's a hundred.
Yeah.
And then it, it has gone up, but we've also incurred more costs.
Right.
The, the perpetual care goes up every year and the cost of concrete goes up for the foundations. We are looking at pouring foundations next year, I believe, so.
I don't know. Maybe.
And, and it depends, so. If not, we'll hire it out and we'll, you know, so that's something that we'll have to budget for next year. But we did put it in next year's budget to do the next five rows.
So that's cemetery rates. Other new business, SRO officer.
I'll take this one, I guess, since, uh, MBA is on the police department. What we had here is we hired Jeremy Inyer to be the new SRO officer down at the school. Jeremy was a prior officer with the Town of Argus, left on good terms. Had no disciplinary issues or anything prior, whatever. He stayed in law enforcement. He just chose to go to Plymouth for a while. I believe it's Plymouth, right, Corey?
Yes.
He asked, um, if we would bring it to consideration to honor his five-year tenure from his previous service with the Town of Argus. Um, I, at that point, I told Corey when it was brought to me that it has to come to the town council. That's not a police commission issue because it's in all benefits, so. That is what the request is, is what the town council's decision is to honor his tenure, if we will honor his tenure.
Just so I understand exactly what will that do for him?
It will basically give him his five years of service benefits for vacation and pension and that kind of stuff. Is really all it will do. Well, I mean, it.
Pension for pension.
Won't do anything for pension. Mainly just for vacation and that stuff, yeah.
Vacation. Longevity?
Longevity, yeah. Those are the two.
Please, I'll meet on my report.
So does anybody have any thoughts on this? Do we have any disagreements to let him have his?
How long ago was it that he was?
I, it's been ten years, maybe. It's been a lot longer.
He's been gone for ten years?
No.
No, I don't think he's been gone ten.
It's at least.
Five, but not ten.
At least eight.
Yeah, it's about.
Yeah. It's about eight, maybe eight, eight to ten, somewhere in there, maybe.
It, it was, it's not ten. I, I probably go back in my police commission stuff and find it, but I don't have that with me.
I, I don't either. I know it's I know it's at least eight.
Yeah.
I would say you're probably pretty close, right, Darius?
Is this something we, we do for other people, or is this just a benefit he asked to, when he asked for, when he took this?
I would think this would be a case by case.
Yeah.
You gotta think sometimes when you hire people, money doesn't always get them to go.
Right.
So you look at this one, we're not sending Academy, they already got that. It's just that little bit of added benefit. Not that we have a lot, but it'd be the same thing I told Jamie. If he's gonna hire a lineman from somewhere else, you may have to throw this at that lineman to get him to come, because I mean, not everything's money, so.
And I, and I realize this position is a, kind of a hard one to fill because not everyone wants to do this.
I'm for it. I, I have no problem with it.
I guess I look at, uh, along the lines of Mark just, if we hired an officer, police commission hired an officer that, uh, is a new officer, we had to send him to the academy, outfit him and everything, we would have the town more money in him starting out to send him to the academy and outfitting him to what? This would cost the town for probably three years.
And plus the academy, we're looking into sometime next year anyhow, and think about getting somebody in there. So we go all.
This is a seasoned officer. He's been a police officer for many years.
Okay.
I'm personally not opposed to it, but that is, like, it's a council decision.
Well, so.
Does it only affect his vacation?
Vacation.
What about his seniority?
Yeah.
Will he be senior?
I don't think you can by, I don't think by state statute, you can. So if I'm correct, the way I understand it, so seniority, yeah.
Seniority.
Like, let's say someone had to get laid off. I don't think that can, it would be the, it wouldn't affect that. It would, he would still be the little man there. This is just for his longevity and making.
So I guess we need a motion to to officer.
Jeremy Inyer.
Inyer.
I will not make that motion myself because I am on the police commission, so I.
We're stuck. We don't, we have a motion and no second.
Well, I can second it. I just don't make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow Officer Jeremy Inyer to come, to, uh, get his longevity and his vacation time restored back to when witnesses back.
This is service.
Oh, yeah.
And basically give him five years of service.
Give him five years of service, okay. Any further discussion? And do you have anything you really wanna say?
I'm really, if I, if I had to say anything, it's like if I, you know, if I have a teach, so if I left the teaching position, like my teaching position for eight or nine years and came back, I would still be considered a new teacher where I'm at. I wouldn't be allowed to have any of the perks or anything, even though I spent all that time doing that. Um, I would have to start from the bottom again. That's what I'm thinking. That's where my headspace is. I don't know if that necessarily sets a great tone for the rest of the officers. And if that's what's gonna be expected, if they decide that they're gonna take that long of a time off and then try and come back in, if they leave on good terms and expect that kind of, um, thing, even though we're doing it face by face, so, on, on a case basis. So that's at least where my headspace is.
Anything else?
No, I, I, I totally get where she's at. I, I do. I will tell, I, you know, all I'll add to that is this is kind of common practice in the business world, where we give guys ten years seniority, don't know if it's coming from a competitor. For us, so.
All right, so we have the motion and the second. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Yeah.
Three ayes, one nays, so it did pass. So it's awesome, and it gets its time. Department head reports.
Yeah.
Please.
So, and I didn't know, Sean, I, I, you have my report, but so, on this salary, was that set then? I'm gonna second. I'm gonna second, okay. So that was what I really had. Um, the only other thing I have, other than that, is we got the light bar put on the charger and should be back in a siege day, so if we have any complaints on us in South Bend or Petersden, that's why. And I think Jeremy's supposed to start, I believe, last I talked to him, is I think right after the first, you're like the fourth.
Right, yeah. He starts after the first of the year, then he'll fall into the salary ordinance was passed tonight, which is what we kind of hired him under.
And Gary went down and did his pre-test physical stuff at the academy, passed it with flying colors. But it might be a little bit of change because of the whole code stuff, so he might be doing some of it online instead of being honored at the academy. We're not quite sure yet.
Just so that you know, within what we did with the salary orders tonight, we, first time ever for your department, we put a range in there because you do have that probationary officer under, so you can.
Would we be in third class, would we have?
Well, right now he's on probation, probationary, I believe.
Do we have a third class?
We do have a third class. But you still will need to go through the police commission to approve that, even though it's a technicality, but according to SOPs, you have to go through that route.
Okay.
Just to notify him or something.
Is that it?
Yes, that's all I have.
Utilities, Jamie.
I don't have too much either. Um, we, we got the dump truck order that, um, you approved last month, or the last meeting. Uh, we're starting construction on Deerfield Meadows. Uh, got self fence put in the other day. Tomorrow we're gonna start putting pipe in the ground, um, storm pile, and then we'll get that retention pond started hopefully next week, so start to move. Uh, leaf pickup, what's that?
How deep you making that pond?
Well, it's, it's gonna be dry. I think it's nine feet in the deepest, but it's.
Supposed to make an efficient pond, Dr. Jamie.
Not unless you put in, um.
It's a lot right next to her door.
I guess you can plug it up if you want, but. Uh, leaf pickup's still going on. We, we talked about ending it this Friday. We'll see, we may still pick up after this. The weather warmed up, so I think people are getting back out there, so. We'll just do it as needed for a while.
I see the boys were around. Picked up the sticks too. I know they didn't for a while because of that, but they did get them, so that, that's nice.
They're getting pretty busy.
Yeah, I know.
The trucks are running constantly.
A question for you on the dump truck. Did they honor that whole price that they gave us since you went ahead and ordered it?
The price that I gave you is what we went with.
So that's what, it will be when it comes in?
I suppose it was.
Okay.
We still haven't got slotted on it yet. I've been asking about that, but I, I don't know when we'll find out.
Did you get the open fix yet? Did you get the metal?
It's, yeah, we got the metal on there, but then it had a broken spring, so Matt's got that right now. It should be back tomorrow, so.
One, one, just a little question, just my own knowledge. What caused that transformer to catch on fire or whatever?
The cutout actually, um, tracked back to the pole.
The wind blowing it so hard?
No, it just, it, they get cracked sometimes and that's what happens to them. They'll, they track back to the pole and it just finally started fire.
So is this something we need to, need to check in more the cutout? Or you just, it, one of them's.
Sometimes it happens.
Didn't you just have one rebuilt and that one went out?
No, that's a reclosed, this is a line fuse, yeah.
Line fuse, yeah, right down the street, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I have. Want to see any other questions?
Mr. Dean, fire.
You should have fire and EMS reports there. EMS has missed a call on, since April, so that's a good thing. Other than that, really don't have much. Just wanna thank the town council for being a good partner the last few years, twenty years I've been doing this, I guess, as we get ready to move into the territory starting January one. Probably won't see us here much, but stop in once in a while. I just wanna thank you guys for all you've done for us over the years.
We'll still, we'll still see you.
Oh, yeah. This is a different board.
Eric, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay.
Ambulance is good?
Yeah, ambulance is all good. Everything's fixed, running good.
Mr. Economic Director?
Tomorrow.
Did you get that?
Tomorrow? I did. It's better than that week. I typed it Monday. I just never emailed it.
Okay.
I didn't get sent to him. You didn't remind me.
Oh. Bad man.
Bad, bad.
You had one job.
And he gets paid down.
He used to come down.
I could not think of that to save my life. Crying out loud.
So Mark, the Christmas in the park, how did that?
Uh, they had a hundred and fifty cars, I think. So it was down obviously from last year, but there were a lot more Santas this year. So they were happy. They went well.
Well, everybody gave us kudos, so they said.
They won the Christmas contest.
Our lights.
That was supposed to be announced today.
Yes. Okay, so you ready?
Yeah.
Bulldog's won first place for the businesses, and then Julie's. And then, um, Julie's Hair Salon was second, and third is, uh, Log House. So yay to them. And then Vicky Crumb on Walnut Street won first place for her lights. And then, um, the guy from Johnny's Road.
Johnny Witt?
Johnny Witt.
Lives next to me.
And his wife won on South Street, and then.
Are you just pulling these out of the air or?
Yeah, no. No, no. I had a very impartial person go around. They don't know anybody in town, so, um.
I'm sorry.
You'll see him in the paper when she releases.
Right. That's, no, you should have asked because they were supposed to be, and if you could give, give me a. But I will tell you, there was one, um, that was third place and they're getting theirs, and then Suzanne was fourth and, or Ed Barkis was fourth and Suzanne was fifth. I do know that, but I, I am missing the one.
Facebook posts here.
Yeah, I will post them on Facebook, but I'll get all the, why didn't you post pictures? Well, we don't post pictures so that you can go around and look at them. We post addresses, so. Well, you should drive by. I mean, they put a lot of time and energy into that, so. And first place was two hundred, second place was a hundred, and third place was fifty, so.
Thank you. Chuck, do you have anything? Unless you have questions.
How's things in the town? Has, have you been looking at any things looking all right, or things you're pending with?
One of the things that we're going to be working on is our mobile home ordinance. So we'll, the planning commission will come up with a with that, and we're looking at whether we have them at all. If we have them, do they need to be on foundations? You know, there's a whole list of things that we need to look at. So we'll probably have that, I would say, to you by February. Don't we have any existing mobile home?
We do have.
Many years ago.
It just says that you can't put a new one in, but these ones that are in town right now
Right.
have been here forever.
Yeah.
And they're falling apart.
Speaking of that, Scott, is he kind of taking his time down?
Yeah, um, I'm getting Mark on that, so.
Am I doing?
Well, Paul, and actually it's Paul because. Well, Paul, and actually it's Paul, because redevelopment needs to speed market, or Goslar.
What you talking about, three eleven?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I see Scott.
I thought you meant that one across the street.
Well, we need to do something there too, but that'll come in the new ordinance then.
Well, I just wanna thank Chuck. I know he does a lot of work for us, and I do want to thank you for that, Chuck.
Nothing else with the department heads? We need a motion to pass department head reports. We have a motion and a second, ask department head reports, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims, Lisa.
Yes, I have, I'm gonna do claims, and then I have one more thing. The claims are five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixteen cents. They are from twelve one to twelve ten. I tried to squeeze as many in there as possible, because it is getting towards the end of the year. So you got everything for the month of December only, one.
I see everybody got their call. Firemen, everybody got their year, okay.
The firemen have been paid, the EMS were paid, the EMS will get one more check by the end of the year. Just to pay them out for, you know, until they go into the territory. And then we have a few bills that are straggling right now, that are just coming in, that we need to get paid by the end of the year, so next next meeting you'll have a docket that is kind of like that last of December, and then you'll have another one that is just the January, so it'll be two different dockets to pass at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to pass claims from twelve one, twenty twenty one, to twelve ten, twenty twenty one, amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixteen cents.
We have a motion and a second to pass claims from docket from who, twelve oh one, twenty twenty one, to twelve ten, twenty twenty one. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims passed.
Before we move on, since this is kind of a clerk's area here, Randy, if you don't mind, Lisa Colvin, she has a very good suggestion, she'd like to have a workshop to go over the new time rule thing and policies that we probably need to go over with her on, to how the town council wants that handled. Lisa, you want to elaborate anymore?
Yeah, so we got training, Jamie was in on it, Mark was in on it, on our new time clock software. Some questions, Cory was in on it. There were some questions that came up, so I think that we should maybe either you appoint somebody from your council to be your representative, and then you sit down with the department heads and figure out what your strategies are gonna be, as far as, you know, what you're gonna allow and what you're not gonna allow, and we come up with a kind of time clock policy, you know, based on those strategies. But I think that they have a lot of questions that I don't think that I should be making judgments on.
I personally think that it should be a account, I think it should be handled in an executive workshop. The council, I don't think one person should be a representative necessarily for the whole council. I don't know what these questions are, nor does you. I think that a list of questions should be brought forward into that workshop, and we can all debate on how we want it to be handled, and then we can go forward.
We won't do that yet this year?
I think we probably should, if we can.
If we can, yes. Whenever is good for you guys. You know, I mean, the department heads obviously will want to be there, so you you're gonna have to, you've got two here, three, you know, and Mark.
Was any, any problems anybody heard last week of the month?
I'm actually off that week, so I don't
So it's a five-day week.
So should we do it at like four o'clock in the afternoon or something? Oh, right.
Four twenty-two.
What about like four thirty in the afternoon could be, yeah? Now, I know George, well, I don't know if George
I bet George can make it by then.
Yeah, so.
You're gonna be looking at six or six thirty.
All right.
So we have a date, yep?
What day do you want it? I mean, you're not gonna want it too close to Christmas, and you're not
You know, last week of the month, which is twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first, those five days.
Probably not twenty-first, because that's a holiday for us. Twenty-ninth.
So we're gonna do it Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at six o'clock.
Should we do the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth?
We can do the twenty-eighth.
Let's do that.
Well, we're gonna move it to Tuesday, twenty-eighth, at six o'clock. Anybody else?
Territory meeting. Territory meeting, six thirty.
You said the twenty-eighth.
We'll change the territory meeting. We can do that. Let's get this done.
Did you say the twenty-eighth?
Yeah. Which is a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's better than twenty-nine, I think.
No.
Try Monday.
What time?
You got some territory stuff you've gotta decide.
We have to decide?
Yeah. Cause you got people starting for the year.
So can you just move the territory to seven?
Can we do the territory meeting to seven o'clock?
If an hour's long enough for what you're doing. You may check with George, you may be able to have it earlier, keep him up to date with what's going on.
Okay, well, we're still, we're gonna
The twenty-eighth.
We're still gonna try the twenty-eighth at six, but we may
Can we do the twenty-seventh?
Monday?
Monday.
We could do the twenty-sixth, no.
No, I mean
All right. One more change, the twenty-seventh, Monday.
At six.
At six.
Okay.
So we're good. Jamie? Jamie, Mark V. Aaron will do whatever he's, no. Mark V. All right.
I passed out a bad debt.
Okay, guys, we gotta take care of this.
I passed out this bad debt, it's not, it's actually, it's so Lori went through all of the bankruptcy notices that we've gotten in the past few years, and so you'll notice most of these have filed bankruptcy. We're assuming that our bill was in that bankruptcy, because it doesn't list every single bill, but if we got a notice yeah, then we have to be listed. The other one, the two that say collection balance, that just means that we have collected everything we can. The KINM takes a percentage of what we collected, so this is the percentage that we're writing off. Okay, and then the other one is less than twenty-five dollars, we've kind of made that twenty-five dollar mark. We're not gonna chase people down for less than twenty-five. And then the last one, of course, is deceased, so can't collect.
What's the I'm not gonna list the name here, it'd be the fifth one down.
Yeah.
What's the COL, what's that mean, is it uncollectible?
No, that means that's KINM's balance, so they, KINM collected the whole entire amount, but then they kept that much of it out for themselves, so I have to write that off, because
Okay, okay. I was just confused by
I asked that question myself earlier, so. Yeah, well, it's not a good, so it's so
Didn't we just do one of these earlier this year?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
Lori's been really cleaning up the old files, and she's been using Trex a lot. The Trex system got us more, I think I showed Jamie the other day, it was more than fifteen thousand this year on old debt. So that came in really handy this year. We send them to, our collection procedure is you get sixty days to pay it, if you don't pay it, then it goes to collections. We use KINM for that, if they can collect it, then we have to pay that thirty-five percent fee to KINM. It's a, no, it's like kind of the fee that they can charge for doing all the life work. And then I have to write off the balance, their balance, if they collect it all, and then after five years, it goes to Trex. But we're thinking about maybe just dropping the KINM part of it and using Trex. Or vice versa, sending them to Trex first, and then send them to KINM if we can, but KINM has a very slim window, it's like seven years, whereas Trex, you can go as far back, I mean, people could owe us money from back in nineteen eighties, you know, or seventies, and we could collect money off of it, so we just have to be able to prove they owed it.
I'll make a motion to pass the I don't have a resolution number on here or nothing, but it's allowance of debts to be written off due to bankruptcy or uncollection for various reasons. Be under the minimum amount.
We have a motion and a second to pass the collection of debts as it is written. Any further discussion?
Derek, do we need a money total on that?
There is a money total.
No, I mean, do I need it in the motion?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. I didn't think about that until I made it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Do you have everything? Did we sign everything?
Yeah, I just need one more thing, I sat through a whole conference today from the State Board of Accounts. They are really pushing capital assets on us. I would like permission to get somebody in here to do our capital assets. It was easy before where you could just mark everything, we have a threshold of five thousand dollars, it was easy to get everybody you know, right, be in our building, owned by Town of Argus, and kind of put a dollar amount on it. Now they want they want this whole spreadsheet where you have to figure out how much you paid for it, and if you didn't know how much you paid for it, you gotta guess. And then you gotta depreciate it out based on their tables and stuff like that. I'm not saying I can't do it, it's just gonna take a long time to do it, so.
Aren't your companies that do that?
They are, so I'm asking if I can get quotes, just to see how much.
I would like to see, I would like to see you get three quotes.
Yeah.
Okay.
At least two quotes at the minimum, but I'd like to see three.
Okay. I know Baker Tilly does it, but I don't know how much they charge, and then there's a couple of other companies that the other clerks have used. Carmel obviously uses one, but their, I mean, their capital asset sheets are enormous, so.
Well, if you're starting from nothing, it's still gonna be enormous.
Right.
Okay.
So and this is only anything that's above five thousand dollars. We're supposed to keep small inventory per department on anything less than five thousand? But that's up to you guys to enforce, I'm not doing that. I'll take the five thousand dollars and above, but
Well, just Jamie's departments alone, you've got several hundreds, hundreds of thousands of stuff in there, so.
It's under five thousand.
It's under.
One piece of equipment talking about the night, okay.
You can't even walk in that building.
Yeah, I would just like to get some quotes, because if we don't get this done, I'm gonna get dinged on it in my next audit.
Make the motion to allow Lisa to get three quotes, the maximum two quotes, the minimum, to find somebody to help her get a handle on the asset numbers for the Town of Argus.
We have a motion and a second to allow Lisa to get quotes at least two with a maximum of three to help her get the asset report filled out. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you. Now, going forward, after we get it done, it will be easy to keep track of.
You think.
Hey, you're the one that, yeah, I get it, all right.
Angie?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You guys forgot intermission.
We forgot intermission.
I make a motion and not have intermission.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.